All right, gang. You stand to say the word. States of America. All right, so I entertain the motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised.
Jason, Elisee, can you guys hear us? Ready to go?
I can hear you great.
All right. Proving the agenda for tonight, should we say aye?
Aye.
All right, so we've got a handful of people here tonight. I'm going to read the protocols. Anybody that wants to speak that did not sign in? You may present a concern to the board during time reserved for hearing public comment. If this is the case, we ask you prior to the start of the meeting, sign in. Note the topic you intend to address the board. Come to the microphone, state your name. Not reflect diversely on political, economic views, ethnic background, character motives of any individual. Please try to keep your comments concise and brief. The board is interested in hearing your concerns and your compliments as well. It's best to call the superintendent's office a couple days before the meeting if this isn't possible, or just ask the board to recognize you during hearings, et cetera. We have our list. Tyler Walkoff, is that right? Oh, there we go.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And hopefully you can hear me. We are out in the Palouse right now at Team Basketball Camp. And I want to thank you guys for letting me join via Zoom and speak. You'd be very proud of our girls' basketball team. We've been representing our district extremely well, playing hard in each game, about three games each day, all exhibiting great teamwork and sportsmanship. I know that I am honored to be a part of this team and to be a Mustang. I will keep my remarks brief because we actually do have another game here at 7:00 PM, so I will start in right away. I wanted to share, when I first started at Prosser, I was directed that any reasonable question or concern from a student, from an athlete, from a parent, or even from a supporter of Prosser Athletics deserved a proper response back. I'm here today requesting that the same directive that I was given be honored by the district that gave it to me. Over the past month, a multitude of reasonable questions and concerns have been presented to the district from their own employees, constituents, and even students that we received payment to serve. Yet the district has sat silence, not providing a single response. There's been a large amount of reasonable questions and concerns on the school district's financial needs, budget cuts, and the declaration of an economic emergency. One such reasonable question that has been presented and should receive a response tonight is this. In the last three fiscal years, the general fund has been presented and approved by the school board in which projected losses in each of those years were $1.7 million lost for 2019, 2020, actual was only $252,000. A $1.3 million net loss for 2021 budget actually ended in a net profit of $1.9 million and a $1.6 million net loss for 2021, '22. In none of these fiscal years mentioned above has an economic emergency request been requested, nor has it been declared. But now with a projected $1.5 million net loss for 2022, '23, why would the district seek the extraordinary request for an economic emergency to be granted if there was no concern to necessitate an economic emergency in the past, even in some cases when the net losses were projected or even larger than the one we're facing? And after coming off a fiscal year where the general fund had a $1.9 million net profit and was moving into the 2021, '22 fiscal year with the highest unassigned fund balance in over nine years, would those funds not be utilized for scenarios just like the one we are projected to be facing? An even greater number of reasonable questions and concerns have been presented to the board and to the district on the elimination of the athletic director position. And yet again, not a single response has been provided. I believe there are further reasonable questions that deserve answers tonight. For instance, what model, what study, or what other school district did our district use to ensure that the elimination of the athletic director position would not create liability issues for the districts, for their coaches, or for their student athletes? What models or what other school districts did our district review to determine this would be a successful solution for our athletic programs? In fact, what other school districts similar in size to us have the same model that we are about to enact? And last, what stakeholders, what coaches, what parents, what athletes were brought to the table to discuss the potential impact of eliminating the athletic director position? Last, my biggest question is why don't we deserve to be communicated to on the elimination of this position and to the plans moving forward and all of the questions and concerns that have mounted over the past month? At this time, there's been no communication as to the plans moving forward. We have no knowledge of how athletics is to operate without an athletic director, no direction on who will supervise athletics in less than three days when the athletic director is officially eliminated, no guidance on how our summer programs are to operate or how to start our upcoming fall season. In fact, we have only learned the district's plans for athletics through media reports, yet have had no one from the district speak or respond to the growing list of questions and concerns or address their very own coaches and athletes as to the plan moving forward. Is this how we deserve to be treated? The constituents of Prosser School District have gone above and beyond making numerous attempts to be heard with reasonable questions and concerns, but have yet to receive an answer. The same constituents have told their district to reverse their decision in eliminating the athletic position, only to be ignored. On May 25th, 296 students, staff, teachers, and constituents were present for the Prosser School Board meeting. An additional 160 people joined in on Zoom. Those constituents in attendance that night stood in solidarity when our athletic director began to speak to the board. And those same constituents, constituents who the Prosser School Board members pledged to represent, continued to stand and applaud in agreement when our athletic director asked that the elimination of his position be reconsidered. In the past, we have seen board members react and respond to a single constituent complaint. Why then aren't the 296 people that were in person that night, the 160 people on Zoom from the May 25th meeting not receiving the same courtesy? My final question is this, and it is sincere, and I ask and would greatly appreciate a response this evening. What more do we need to do to be heard? What more do student athletes, parents, staff, coaches, teachers, community members, what more do the constituents of the Prosser School District need to do for the board to enact our will of not eliminating the athletic director position? I do appreciate your time, and I look forward to a response hopefully tonight to these questions. Thank you.
That's on the list as well.
Okay, I just kind of brought. So Laura Fockhoff, ASB, Athletic Secretary of the High School.
Before she gets started, is it possible, Andy, for you to say the names so we could hear who it is? And is there any way to scoop that table up to like, like right before where Jeannie's sitting? And then it would be in the frame and we could see her too?
Yes and yes. Thank you, Ruth.
Laura Fockhoff, ASB, Athletic Secretary. So good evening, everyone. It's me again. I'm just here to remind everyone where we are because at the end of this week, Prosser School District is, will no longer have an athletic director. At the last board meeting, you heard me list out the things that I have the ASB and Athletic Secretary. Only is this within the athletic department, and that's kind of what I handed out here. I handed all of you copies as I feel it is important that you have one. You'll need it to remind you of the liability issues you're going to have to face as a district in just a few weeks. I have asked around and no one can tell me who's going to oversee athletics after tomorrow. Summer athletics isn't over and no one can tell me who's going, oh, I guess, yeah, isn't over. Cheer still hasn't over tonight camp at the end of July. Fall sports start August 17th, and that's only eight weeks away. I can tell you that there's absolutely no plan for the start of fall sports. Athletic registration will not be ready to open. There's no preseason meeting happening for the parents, the athletes, or the coaches. And I don't know who's going to make sure we're ready for our first home competition. And if I'm completely honest, I feel like the majority of those responsibilities are going to fall on me. This seems like I have been the only consistency that the athletic department has seen in the last five years. And the first time I spoke, I did mention that there have been three athletic directors over the last five years. I have been the only constant over the last five years. I think I'm going to write this down, but my start date is usually dependent on the WIAA schedule. And if it goes strictly off of my contract, I wouldn't start until five days before the school year starts. And that's well after athletics have started. But this last month at PHS, it felt like a marathon. The news of losing our athletic director and no plans to fill the position was a complete shock. And we all knew our counseling secretary was retiring. That was no surprise. But the news coming only two days before graduation that the district wasn't filling her position was, to say the least, appalling. The secretaries at the high school are very much at a loss as to what exactly is expected of us. You have taken away two very essential positions for a school district of our size and have left us with no direction. I'm sitting here again this week because I feel, and I don't want to speak for everyone here today, but I feel our words are falling on deaf ears. You have a staff at this district that has pushed forward through these last four weeks of school. This is right here for the kids. And I'm sure none of you have liked the decisions you've had to make as of late, but I hope you've recognized the dedication of your employees within this district before you make any more decisions that directly impact our daily lives during our workday. And I leave again tonight with the same request I had last time. Please give us some guidance and a plan for this summer and for the fall season. Thank you.
Monica Neumeyer.
Hi, everyone. My name's Monica Floristy Meyer. My kids, Katia and my grandkids, now go here. And I'm here more with questions. I think the last time I was here was with questions. Actually, the last time was very inscripted. I signed last minute and it went to rise, so I apologize. But this time I'm coming with questions. So in the last meeting, here, in the last meeting, Jason talked about running the district like a business. I personally was very happy to hear this. I think that's wonderful. It's absolutely needed in that it makes things more black and white for discussion and review of topics. It helps to separate the emotions and the friendships that can very much muddy these waters when making informed and fair decisions. When the communication, the confidence, and the respect have been broken to the point that it is with all of us, at some point we have to ask ourselves, how did we get here? How are we accountable? Board members and administration of the Prosser School District, there were so, so many better choices you could have made in your response other than silence. No, I think I'm so loud it's like cheating out, so. I have no inside voice. Now, running a business means you have to at times have hard discussions in order to meet your goals and standards. They won't always be pleasant, and it takes listening to the facts and sometimes not letting your egos or friendships get in the way of achieving the bigger picture. Now, each of you board members are in a seat that is part of this district, and it is made up of five seats. Peggy Douglas, District 1, Andy Howe, District 2, Elisa Riley, District 3, Jason Reiner, District 4, Judy Aubrey, District 5. Now, these districts together are what make up the school board. That is the employer, the employer of the superintendent currently held by Matt Ellis. The board is held with the task of holding accountability and providing confidence to the stakeholders by ensuring the superintendent leads the school district in a position of financial stability and at the same time, academic success for the students. I'm having to break it down to you like this to remind you of this. My friends, these positions stay. You do not. I urge you to look at the personal actions and think about the responsibility you have as an employer of the superintendent, not a friend, for the sake and the success of this school board. So my questions are in regards to July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024 contract that the superintendent, Matt Ellis, and the school board, former president at that time, Peggy Douglas signed. I have hard questions, and I'm sorry, and I will type these out for you and give them to you. They, I will email them to you later this evening. And if I'm wrong, as I've said before, please clarify. I've received no answers. But I do have questions on conflict of interest, questions on ethic violations, question on OPA, OMPA violations, and on an RCW violation. I'm also wondering if Matt Ellis', Mr. Ellis's evaluation, I'm sorry, I'm referring to Mr. I was also wondering if Mr. Ellis's evaluation was completed, and if so, when did it happen? I'm asking this because I could not find record of an executive session or a public notice of the evaluation, which to my understanding is required by law. Did any of those things happen? Was this followed? I, as I'm saying, these are questions I have. Now, the first contract between the superintendent and the school board was for the term of July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2021. And that was also signed by the school board president at that time, Mrs. Douglas. So to make this conversation a little easier to follow with all these dates, I'm going to refer to that as the original contract and the July 1st to 2021 through 2024, the existing contract. Why does the existing contract differ so much from the original contract? Why did it have to change? Why does it seem that the changes have created a financial benefit for Mr. Ellis, specifically in the section of his annuity, where the COLA increase of certified employees appears to result in a contribution of the same percentage in his personal annuity that is funded by the district? Now, since COLA increases are part of the unit contract and he is part of the discussion and approval of those unit contracts, does this not create a problem? Is this allowed? It is my understanding that the existing contract was created between Mr. Ellis and Mrs. Douglas. The board was not involved. If I'm wrong, I apologize. But I do say this with some degree of confidence, as I could not find the agenda or meeting minutes which noted discussion of creating this existing contract or that the current president, president of the board at that time, would be tasked in assisting the superintendent with the creation of his own contract instead of using a school attorney. Why wasn't the school attorney used? Is that not one of his levels of expertise? Does that normally happen? With the, with the school board president assisting the superintendent in writing his or her own contract, would that not be a violation of OPMA as the board items were being discussed outside of the board meetings? I don't know. That's why I'm asking. Would also be a violation of ethics as existing contract provided the current superintendent with financial benefit that the president at that time of this board helped create? When the existing contract was signed, were the legal requirements met? Was it on the agenda? Was public notice provided? Why was the contract moved to consent agenda and not an action item? Isn't the purpose of consent agenda to streamline routine and not controversial items into a group where it can be passed with a single motion and a single vote? Is it true that the president of the board at that time was part of the, was one of the ones that voted on the single motion or the single vote item? Is that ethical and is that not a conflict of interest if the president of the board at that time nobody helped write the contract but later on approved it? And if I'm wrong on any of this? My biggest question though is in Section 13 referred to as extension of contract. Now, the beginning of the contract, of the existing contract, states the term of the contract would be from July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2024, which does meet the requirement of RCW 28A dot 400 dot 010. That is the employment of superintendent, superintendent's qualifications, general powers, terms, and contract renewals. However, is that my title? They're probably saying, yes, it is. Yes, it is. Danny's like, kick that button. However, I am wondering where it deviates from that RCW. It's in Section 13. That section states the contract will quote-unquote extend by one year. Does the RCW support this? There is a difference between the term renewal and the term extension. A renewal acknowledges the ending of a term. The RCW states it is a renewal. It even outlines additional RCWs that may be applicable when renewing. How is the board interpreting this RCW? Now, an extension, the term of extension is very different. An extension must rely on the existing contract for there to be an extension. The contract has to exist and stay in existence. If not, there is nothing to extend. I'm wondering if this contract is in violation of RCW 28A dot 400 dot 010 along with the questions I had on OPMA violations, conflicts of interest, and unethical actions that I asked about.
Well, could you go back to the RCW number?
Yes, I know. I typed that a couple times and I might have got it backwards. Oh, wait, I couldn't paste it. I'm not saying all this. These are my notes. Oh, here it is. RCW 28A dot 400 dot 0, 0 and 0, employment of superintendent.
Dot 0, 1, 0?
Yes, and that one I couldn't paste. Thank you for asking me that, by the way. I appreciate that. So I'm wondering if this contract is in violation of the RCW we just went over along with the questions I had on OPMA violations, conflict of interest, and unethical actions. So does this not make the contract an null and void resulting in Prosser School District referring back to the original contract that had an end date of June 30th, 2021 that was written by the school attorney? Would that not mean then that any decisions made by the current superintendent after June 30th, 2021 are also null and void? And because he was not operating on a legal contract? So this means that would affect the raises, the union contracts, the curriculum decisions, the student issues, and even more, but the hiring, suspension, and termination of employees of the Prosser School District. Basically, every action from June 30th, 2021 on, like his contract, would be null and void. Also, being that the original contract was already fulfilled, whether or not there would be no buyout offered, but the salary compensation benefits, investments paid out to the current superintendent on behalf of the Prosser School District, would they not then be owed back to the school district and their stakeholders? Now, I know I've asked a lot of questions and they can't be answered right now, and you know, many of us have asked a lot of questions. I've asked a lot of questions. I've done my best to keep the motions out of it. I've said Kevin's name maybe twice. I have done my best to try to stay on task for the respect of you and the respect of them because emotion gets nowhere, but you guys haven't answered us. I thought we asked good questions. Andy, when you sent me that text, and all you did was thank me for complimenting, it hurt my feelings. You didn't ask, if you could have a copy of what I asked, you didn't tell me a timeline when the questions would be answered. I made a point to acknowledge you, all of you, and you didn't acknowledge us. You haven't acknowledged us. This does not work. It's broken, and we all have an opportunity to fix it, but it's probably going to be painful based on where we're at right now. But I do think it's fair, on my questions, if I type them up and email them to you, that if you guys could at least act back to me back Friday of a date, not common answers. You guys got a lot going on of a date of when you think or expect to give a legal reply. I'm sorry, the, you know, it's, you know, it's, you don't understand, you know, they don't know the bigger picture. You don't know that you guys have a counsel that you can use to answer questions. I am asking that you please utilize them. I, this part's the really hard part for me. I, I don't know what to do. I don't. We are stuck in a situation that we just can't be heard and get answers on. I think many of us asked very fair questions. So I'm disposing right now because I won't hide about it. I won't give a rumor. I won't post it on Facebook. I will look at you and say it to your face, just as I wish you would say it to mine and to them, to your staff, to your students. We need to have some sort of resolution or plan. And I don't know what kind of island I'll be on, but I'm prepared to stand on it. If action is not made, I will seek an attorney to help me answer these questions along with the other documents. Documents that staff members that are scared, that business owners that are worried about being judged have given to me. A lot of my words are actually not mine, but I will say them. And it's my intent to seek an attorney to get the answers I need and to seek if there is just cause before, before a judge for a recall. I do not want this. I love you. Lastly, I end with this. I know the subject of my discussion was about Ms. Douglas and was about Mr. Ellis. It is not singling, for me, it is not singling them out in any way. They just happen to be the individuals that made these decisions. And I know others are pointing a lot of fingers, but after writing this today, I do not. I don't know why the decisions were made, and I hope to have an answer why they were made. But honestly, the state that we're in falls on all of you. It's not the two of them, and quite honestly, it's not fair that two of them get dragged through the mud. We're all in this together. We're going to break it together, apparently, and fix it. I hope we fix it. Thank you for your time.
Angela Skeen?
My name is Angela Skeen. I'm a teacher here at Prosser High School. Thank you for allowing the community to speak to you again tonight. I'm here to avoid my concerns about the non-renewal of the athletic director position and not replacing the counseling secretary at PHS. As a parent and a teacher at PHS, these recent decisions are very troubling to me. I would like to briefly ask you as representatives of the students and families of the Prosser School District to consider a few things. For generations, the families of Prosser have always supported Prosser Athletics and our students striving to be the best they can be athletically. Are we ready to receive the designation of being the only two A school in the state to not have an AD? This is a designation that's not a compliment. It doesn't compliment us, nor does it provide the best opportunities for our student athletes. Anyone remotely connected to high school athletics can see that this decision is disastrous for our school district. The kids and their coaches will pay the price. As a school board, you are entrusted with the task of providing the best educational experience for all of our students in the Prosser School District. Does, does this decision support that? Are we doing what is best for our students? Last week, a community member attending the meeting asked for the formulas and the calculations the district is using to define a financial emergency we are in. Have those been provided to that individual like she requested? A transparent presentation of those calculations might provide some clarity to the community, but many community members feel confused about how this decision was made. Has the district considered the following? Using some of the five million dollar cash reserves during this financial emergency, selling, selling some of the various real estate property the district has currently. For example, next year when which trans school is being housed at the old PHS, there will be extra unused space in the old PHS building. Have you considered moving the district office, the tech office, and the curriculum office to the old PHS building and sell that wonderful riverfront property the offices are now in? I think that would go for a good price. I respect the goal of being financially responsible for our district and I believe there are ways to achieve that without such drastic measures of not having an AD and not replacing the secretary in our counseling student services department. Have you considered gathering a committee, a committee of community members whose expertise is in accounting and finance who can provide sound financial advice to our district during this time of transition? The recent decisions surrounding this financial emergency is lessening the access to vital student services at PHS and will create chaos in our upcoming school year and athletic seasons. Is this the best we can do for our kids? What is the plan at PHS for knowing AD? Will the principal be expected to fill that enormous work position in addition to his current one? Will a secretary? Will a teacher run their prep? Those are all solutions that spell disaster. What is the plan for not replacing the secretary for the PHS counseling department? Asking staff members to just absorb those duties is unrealistic and does not show clarity of what that job entails. As a parent of a current sophomore, jeopardizing the record-keeping of that position of registrar at PHS with things such as transcripts, scholarships, transcripts to colleges, scheduling, and triaging the needs of our students is not something I wish to have absorbed. My child deserves better. The cuts being made recently hit the hardest student success and achievement. Outlining a plan for these decisions and communicating that would be greatly appreciated by athletes, their families, their coaches, staff members, and longtime supporters of Prosser students. Please consider listening to this community and the stakeholders that will be impacted by these decisions on a daily basis. The community is speaking loudly about their disapproval of the non-renewal, the contract of the AD position and now not replacing various staff members due to retirements. Consider them and what they want to see happen in our school district. We need our leaders at this time to make sound, considerate decisions for the staff and students in Prosser that will not lessen their educational experience in the Prosser School Districts. Please show the community that you care about our kids and the staff. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Marcy Mercer. I currently work for the school district, district as an office assistant. I was informed yesterday that due to the proposed budget cuts that the Princel High School secretary position would not be refilled after Mrs. Ledesma retires this year. This upset me greatly, as I know. I know firsthand what this job entails. As I was the counseling office secretary at Prosser High School for eight and a half years, nine years ago. I know this is a crucial, crucial position for the high school. The high school counseling office secretary is also the registrar. This person is the first contact for new students. She also sets up the courses in the school operating system so that they properly report to the state and are accurately transcribed onto the official transcripts. She also does many other duties, but these are probably the two most crucial ones in regards to a proper functioning high school. This position simply cannot be eliminated. This didn't make sense to me at all that it would even be considered, so I asked someone about it. I was told that the counseling secretary position would not be eliminated, that the proposed budget cut is to reduce the Prosser High School secretarial staff from five secretaries to just four. Some might think that this is a good move. They might think that these ladies are not working to their full potential and can take on more. Since I worked at the high school for eight years and also at Heights Elementary for about five years, I know just how hard all the secretaries work. They all have very crucial jobs and all work very hard. Reducing the secretaries by just one and redistributing the duties to four of them is going to push the staff to a breaking point. Customer service to our students and parents is going to, is probably going to take a hit. Mandated data that is reported to the state is going to be impacted. If you think these ladies are not working hard or to their full potential, I encourage you all to spend a day with each one of them to see just how hard they work. And I have here very brief and not very thorough list of what their duties are and that I would like to give you. Their work is also interrupted by phone calls by students and by parents. Many days it is impossible for them to get their work done when school is in session, so they have to work late and they still get it all done. We would all like the school district budget to be balanced. It is my understanding that the proposed budget has not been finalized and that the proposed cuts in so many areas don't necessarily have to be done in all in one year. So I implore the board and administration to please take their time and consider some of these cuts and work to find solutions that won't so negatively impact our community so much and so quickly. Thank you.
I'm Suzy Strauss, the former Prosser High School counselor who worked here from nineteen eighty-seven to two thousand and eleven. During the time and following my retirement, I have worked closely with the PHS counseling office secretary and registrar, Linda Ledesma. During the twenty-four years I was the counselor here and following my retirement, the position of the secretary has increased in complexity. It is one of the very most technical, computer-driven positions in the Prosser School District. From what I understand, the school board and superintendent are planning not to fill the position after Linda Ledesma's retirement. And now I'm hearing that you're going to spread the job among four secretaries that are already very busy. Unfortunately, I think this is, this thinking comes from not understanding what the counseling office secretary, registrar's job entails. I am hoping to clarify to you what that job requires. The counseling office secretary must have a broad-based understanding of Skyward Records Program, which has existed in the district since about two thousand and fourteen. The program transfers data from not only our industry schools to one another, but it is used in all areas of keeping up-to-date records on our high school students, their credits, and their graduation status. Credits from not only our classes offered at PHS, which include a variety of that are receiving college credits in the high school, from the community colleges and try kept, are kept on our students' transcripts. All of these classes have specialized codes so that a person reading the transcript, such as a college admissions counselor, scholarship committees, etc., can determine what courses each student has taken and whether he, she, or they qualifies for admission or scholarship. The registrar also evaluates incoming transfer students' transcripts from other high schools and adds them to our Skywards program. In addition to that, if one of our students transfers to a school, they send a certified transcript to the school district that the student is transferring to. The counseling office secretary works closely with the PHS principal in organizing the master schedule or on Skyward. It is the registrar that inputs the class courses, what period they are offered every semester at PHS, and that the students use for registration. She is the registrar, just like a registrar in college. This is a tremendously difficult and complex job. There is no one in the district currently who understands Skyward better than Linda Ledesma regarding registration. I hope that you will accommodate the high school by asking Linda to help train whoever her replacement is. And I do hope there's a replacement. The counseling office secretary works with parents, students, counselors, and teachers and facilitating communication among all of them. This position is very important for our high school and that is communication. And we've been talking a lot about communication here tonight and how important it is. While I was in our PHS counseling office, the, while I was at our PHS counseling office, the secretary was a bio point in assisting students with mental health concerns. And after these last two years, we know that our kids are struggling. Oftentimes, students would visit our office who were upset or a teacher would call and ask the secretary to see that one of the counselors, please, please see a student as soon as possible. The school professional that that student would see and who would work with that student initially would be the counseling office secretary. So, what will happen with students who are upset when the counselors are already busy? Just sit them out in the hall to increase their potential anxiety? Aren't our kids more important than this? The counseling office secretary is also the liaison between the colleges who visit the high school during the year. She assists in having informational meetings and scheduling visitations of both college and technical schools on a regular basis. Who is going to keep up this task? Oftentimes, college representatives who wish to contact specific students arrive totally unannounced and the counseling office secretary is the advocate for the student. When you think of some of the outstanding grads and how much our counseling office secretary helped in their success, it is amazing. I can name a list of kids who ended up in prestigious universities and military academies because the counseling office assisted them in their efforts and the secretary understood the vital technical aspects of their graduation goals. In regards to scholarships, Linda has, has a database of scholarships that are offered annually in our community and also the representatives of the scholarship committees do contact for each local scholarship offered. Annually, each committee contacts Linda with information about the scholarships they will be offering for the senior class. If Linda does not hear from the committee, she contacts that particular committee. She then organizes a list of available scholarships, including the deadline, timeline for our seniors and sends our seniors reminders of scholarship deadlines. For the scholarship committees, Linda organizes the scholarships for every scholarship committee, adds certified transcripts to each student's scholarship application and has a file of scholarships organized and ready to pick up for each scholarship committee in our Prosser community. That's why it is so vital. And also those that are not from our community. This job is technical and so important to our senior's success. Following school being out, the counseling office secretary is responsible for sending final certified transcripts to colleges and universities and tech schools designated by graduating seniors. Along with this, she may be sending certified transcripts throughout the year for past graduates who are needing verification of their graduation date and transcript and also for students who have transferred to different high schools. There are so many small jobs that the counseling office secretary fulfills and some of these jobs can become extremely problematic if they are not completed or possibly not accurately, accurately completed. This is not a job that you can just pass around to secretaries in the building who are most likely already overwhelmed in their own areas. For example, with the elimination of the athletic director, the AD, student activities secretary is not going to have any extra time to assist in the counseling office. I am also here to represent several Prosser scholarship committees. The Prosser Scholarship Blue Mountain and Chapter KPEO who are extremely concerned about the decision to not hire a counseling office secretary. We are fortunate to manage scholarships which contribute substantial income to our Prosser high seniors. And the person who has assisted us in making this possible has been the counseling office secretary, Linda Ledesma. She is the person we contact with questions, who sets up meetings with students and is a real advocate for both the scholarship committees but is also an amazing asset to the Prosser community. And I know you can find someone that Linda will be happy to help out to fulfill this position. At best, it is short-sighted to eliminate this position. I strongly ask you to build a position of counseling office secretary, registrar, and I ask Linda Ledesma to train the person initially, to use Skyward and the variety of duties Linda has also in the counseling office and registrar position. When people voted for the levy this spring, they did not vote to have these positions eliminated. They voted for the services for kids, for our kids, for my own grandkids. This is what is so upsetting about your elimination of disposition, your ongoing dismissal of community concerns in eliminating the athletic director position of Kevin West. I assure you that we will persist in making our feelings known. The elimination of these two key positions is unfair to the parents and the students of the Prosser community. This is not why the community voted to support the levy. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Sam Strauss, also known as David Strauss. I'm here representing my daughter, who has some input, but is unable to be here tonight because she's just returning from overseas and just getting the end of the day. So this is a letter that she has already sent to the board, so I believe most of the members and superintendent have probably already read this, but she was, didn't want me to read this in the public meeting so that the community would, would also. Dear Prosser School Board of Directors and the current superintendent of the Prosser School District. Dear Crosser School Board of Directors and the current Superintendent of the Crosser School District, I am right in support of the current Athletic Director Kevin Lusk. I have not been able to attend any of the recent school board meetings due to conflicts of my schedule, but I think my perspective may be helpful. I am a board-certified advanced practice nurse practitioner in psychiatry and have been working in mental health for 22 years and working in my current role for 18 years. I have worked all of my career in the lower valley for the last five years of Crosser. I love working in the community, which I live, and helping people in the community that I love. I'm raising my family here and can't even imagine living anywhere else. I'm also a past Mustang and graduated in the class of 1992, 30 years ago. Yikes. In my professional role, I see people, evaluate them to see if they meet the criteria for a mental health diagnosis, and if appropriate, I prescribe medication to improve their symptoms. I see people throughout their lifespan, but my passion is working with teens and young adults. This age group can be challenging because of their undeveloped brains, which cause them to be very impulsive. Also, sometimes they are hesitant to trust adults. I love working with this age group because they want to get help, some desperately. When they come to me, they are usually in the worst place they have been in their life. More often than not, they have suicidal ideation, meaning that they have thought about ending their life. I would say 80% of the teens I I see have suicidal ideation, and very often, they have attempted at least once. What is encouraging is that they respond well to treatment and even very little treatment. Mostly what they need is someone to talk to and someone who really cares about them. Even if they need medication to elevate their symptoms, they are always invested and usually respond very positively and quickly. I know medications sometimes scare people, especially giving them to our youth, but I strongly believe taking medication can save lives. We often accept that people die from cancer, diabetes, viruses, and other medical issues, but untreated mental health symptoms can be deadly. Because I work locally, I do see a large number of students within the Crosser School District. In the Healthy Youth Survey that was most recently released in March, March 1st of 2022, there is one fact that I want you to all be aware of. The survey was conducted with parental consent and with about 100 and about 100 Crosser teens participated. The most striking statistic was that 19% reported seriously considering attempting suicide, and 9% have attempted. Think about that for a while. Out of 100 students, nine could have completed death by suicide if their attempt is successful. We are in a mental health crisis across our country and especially with our youth. We all know the challenges that the pandemic only worsened all of our mental health. Most people who need the services are unable to find them. I am completely booked until September, and it's very challenging to fit in emergency referrals. Many surrounding agencies cannot see people until October or even December. With this knowledge, you must understand that all within my profession are doing the very best we can to serve the needs of our communities, but there is just not enough of us out there. This terrifies me. This means that many of our teens will not get any help when they need it the most. So how does this speak to Kevin Lusk, our Athletic Director? Well, how does it not? Most of our youth are enrolled in the school district. Teachers and support staff are a vital part of identifying and taking care of our teens. Everyone knows they are there to educate kids. But talk with any teacher or school employee, and they will tell you that the most fulfilling part of their job is taking care of the kids, talking with them, checking in on them, being a person they can come and open up to when they think there is no one there for them, laughing with them, being there to celebrate their achievements, but also being there to support them when they are down in crisis. Anyone who knows Kevin knows he is a person the kids trust. Kids go to him for help in all sorts of ways, and he is always there. I have had to call him to see if he can support some of the kids I see. Many are afraid that they may not be able to participate in their sport because their grades are down, often because they are missing school due to their mental health symptoms. And we all know how positively athletics and exercise can benefit mental health, and Kevin recognizes this and supports the students. Right now, we need all hands on deck. We need every educator, parent, every school employee to be looking out for our vulnerable youth. Taking away Kevin is taking a trusted adult from our kids. It is a fact that sometimes our youth just need one adult, one adult to show that they care for them. Kevin has been that one adult time and time again. Crosser needs him, but mostly our kids need him. And honestly, all people who work in our mental health industry need him because if he can catch one kid who needs services and gets them the help they need, he could be saving their life. I hope this provides you with some perspective of what our youth are dealing with within our school district. Please reach out to me if you would like more information. And she gives her personal phone number. Well, with regards, Heather S. Morris, psychiatric AR and P.
Rick Adams, I'm, excuse me, an old retired ag teacher here for the district and former C D director. And I, I guess I am guilty of being, doing complacent and not keeping track of what all is going on. I worked with Craig for many years when I was C T director, and we bound, we always worked with a balanced budget. We always stayed within our means, and I appreciate the work that you have done for all these years. And so I was shocked to find out that we had this huge budget deficit and problem. I didn't know. Well, I don't, the school finance classes that I took a few years ago, we were instructed that 5% should be retained in cash reserve. Well, it appears that $5.5 million is well in excess of that percent. Isn't that closer to 10%? So it doesn't appear that there's a huge financial crisis. Budget situation is a guess. You project what the revenue might be, project, guess what the expenses might be. Some years, you hit the nail on the head and you make money come out. Some years, you come out short, which apparently over the last eight or nine years, that's happened. And ahead and behind a little bit, but we haven't accumulated $5.5 million in wealth by dipping into the into the reserves every year and coming up short. So the taxpayers have helped to bring this surplus. So I don't see this huge crisis that we have to start eliminating positions, teachers at Heights and other buildings. Those are the positions that are closest to the students. If we have to eliminate something, it should be the farthest away from students that we can get, the ones that have the least impact. Athletic Director, that's got a huge impact, but hundreds of students. I think there are over 500 students that are involved in some type of athletic, the extracurricular activities. Those are the positions that we need to retain. So I, I, I don't see this huge crisis. I see it as, I'm as conservative as anybody. And I think we can tighten our belt. I think that we've had some attrition, we've had some retirements, some positions have been eliminated. I think with a little patience over the next two or three years, you can expand that four, five, $6 million reserve. And that reserve is for rainy day projects, things that come up. The reserve is meant to take care of things like a roof that leaks or collapses or a boiler that goes down. If there's a major facilities need in this district, then we've got the opportunity to run a bond. And with that kind of cash reserve that we have, our bond rating is excellent, it's good. So there's not that fear. We've got enough to take care of any emergencies. So I think that eliminating athletic director position, that might save, you know, a few thousand dollars. But as my grandmother used to say, that would be penny wise and pound foolish. Like Tyler said it, you know, a few weeks ago, there were, there were around 500 people in the community that tuned in either in person or Zoom to board me and express their opinions. And those folks are the shareholders of this company that we run. And it's a unique company. It's a nonprofit company, but as a company, we have to be successful. But it's not a for-profit company. We're in the business of educating kids and giving them the activities like athletics and other things, extracurricular, extracurricular activities like FFA and band and all these others that we're known for. That's what we want to do. So I think that if we exhibit a little bit of patience, that I think that budgets can balance, will eventually. I think that, you know, Andy, you're familiar with football. I think the board might want to say, upon further review, maybe we might want to change this position. And I think the people in this room and the other people, both, if we're talking about a business, the shareholders, the stakeholders are speaking and have spoken. And in about 18 months, you, we need to come together again, and you're going to want to support those shareholders, the stakeholders, because we're going to need another operation levy, right? Well, the 290 people or whatever that were in the auditorium, we need a whole lot more than those 55 votes. We're going to need all these people, we're going to need all the supporters. And these are the people that came and expressed their opinions and have talked to you about it. They're not rabble-rousers in the community. These are the people, these are the doers, the doers, the shakers, the ones who make it happen. You heard from the students, you heard from parents, you heard from path faculty members, you heard from coaches and parapros and buzz drivers. You know, I, there are just a lot of people that express their opinions, and I hope you heard it because they're the ones that, that's the support team that makes this whole thing go. It's not, not a few people. And so that's the team, that's the support that you need to have on this thing. We need to restore the confidence, and that support will happen. But you've got to make a move here to restore that confidence. You've got the opportunity to do that. So I guess you can roll up your sleeves and fix things. Before it's too late. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mackenzie Lopez, and I hold many roles in relation to the school district. I am a Crosser School District alum, theater view, Heights, Wissland for a little bit, Housel and Crosser High School, all 13 years of school. I'm a city of Crosser homeowner and a taxpayer, and I'm a teacher at Crosser High School, and I am a parent of a soon-to-be kindergartner in the Crosser School District. I watch the events of the last few months, few weeks unfold, and I am left more confused than I was at the start. As a taxpayer, I'm a little bit frustrated. It's clear that my tax dollars are not quite being managed appropriately. I'm frustrated that though the funding of athletic activities and an athletic director was in the fancy charts that were posted on the district website and Facebook, if the levy passed, the board has decided without explanation to rid Crosser of the essential athletic director position for both Crosser High School and Housel Middle School. As a parent of a kiddo who's about to start kindergarten, I'm scared. I'm scared to keep my child in the school district until poorly managed funding. He's a bright kid, very bright, and I'm scared that he's going to have slim pickings when it comes to his choices for advanced courses. I'm concerned that he's going to be given a very bare minimum education and that he will not be pushed to achieve excellence at school. I'm also scared that he's not going to have much of an athletic opportunity by the time he hits high school. As a teacher at Crosser High School, I'm worried as well. Aside from being a full-time teacher this year, I also was a little crazy and took on being a junior class advisor, prom advisor, HOSA advisor, and a volunteer track and field coach. Yeah. These many roles that I played with the district meant that I was in Kevin's office a lot. Some weeks, I was there every single day. Athletic Director does not just oversee athletics, even though his title says that. He oversees everything, all of the activities that happen in the school. HOSA, which is a newer club to PHS, wanted to do a blood drive. We wanted to sell prostate kits, and we wanted to host a one-and-a-half-mile fun run this year. And we were able to do those events because I had to coordinate with Kevin all of those things. As the junior class advisor, we wanted to sell concessions at the girls' soccer games, which hadn't really been done before, and so we had to coordinate that with Kevin as well. Prom Committee sought to put on the first prom in over three years with very minimal funding because of COVID and fundraising issues. And so because of that, I was coordinating with Kevin a lot, and we were able to put on a very successful prom. Track and Field was emergently in need of crossbars for pool ball, which is the part that I coached, because ours had broken at the Crosser invite, and we had a meet coming up in three days, and she was able to make it happen. For you to expect to be able to spread out all of the athletic directors' responsibilities that Laura has listed out for you last week, if you can truly expect to spread out all of these responsibilities on all of the staff at PHS or multiple staff and secretaries, it's, it's completely alarming. Scheduling events is going to be a nightmare. Staff advisors will no longer have a direction in planning fundraising or events, and our associated student body, our students, are going to be who suffer the most. Isn't that why we're education, these kids? As a Crosser High School alum, I am proud to be a Mustang. I was pushed to achieve excellence. I was an open-door student, an honor student. I took algebra and geometry when I was in middle school. I took AP Calculus my junior year in high school, and I continued on to take AP Calculus B.C. my senior year of high school. I also took AP English, AP U.S. History, and AP Physics. As a three-sport athlete, I was also expected to take strength and conditioning class. Now, because I had such a busy schedule, that was very difficult to do, except the district had a paid and a credit-approved zero-hour strength and conditioning class for me to take. So it was no problem. As a graduate of the class of 2013, I was ready to tackle the real world. My scores on the AP U.S. History test, the AP English, and the AP Calculus test allowed me to fast-forward over those required courses in college. My college professors were amazed at the ability of my writing skills, my ability to write research essays, thank you, Barb Warner. My college physics professor tried to convince me multiple times to change my major to physics because I had such a great understanding of the subject. I don't bring all of this up to toot my own horn, but I actually bring it up to toot our teacher's horn. You guys set me up for success, turned me into a very successful student and a very successful adult. It was the multitude of teachers, coaches, and administrators who poured their hearts into me, school employees, like I'll just name them, Dean Smith, Mark Little, Scott Yetter, Barb Warner, Brett Dillon Hunt, and Mr. Kevin Lusk, were the ones who helped to build me into who I was. Those teachers and coaches were able to set me up for success because they themselves were set up for success and supported by their upper administrators and school board. The scary thing is that I only graduated from high school nine years ago. How did we get here that quickly? How can we not have the funding for a zero-hour strength and conditioning class anymore? How can we not have the funding for algebra and geometry at the middle school? How can we not offer calculus or AP Physics? And how can we be getting rid of the most monumental educator and administrator at Crosser High School? Can you answer us? We've asked you a whole lot of questions. Where's my tax money going? What will you do to set my son up for success in the district? Why are we steering our students away from high school instead of providing them with opportunity? And what are we going to do to give support to the teachers and advisors if we do not have an athletic director?
Lynn?
I think others have done a wonderful job of expressing my feelings. Thank you.
Mr. Donaldson?
You signed me up. I thought everybody else did so well that I should keep my mouth shut tonight, but perhaps. I wore this tonight. I'm so proud of this. Says Dan Donaldson, district staff. Little badge, thirty years. I spent more than thirty years in this district, but I've been very proud of that. The last three weeks or so. Has beaten on that. It has beaten on everyone in this room. It has beaten on the kids. I trust it has beaten on you. Hope the hell it has. You need some of it coming back at you. We are the patrons of the school district. You work for us. And we have told you what to do. You continue to ignore us. Do not reduce credits. Do not reduce staff. Do not fire Kevin Lusk. Do not misinterpret these directions as mere venting. We ask you to provide for us action, not reaction. We are fully capable of initiating a set of recall petitions and carrying through that course of events. Which removes from the board or the administration those individuals that the patrons of the district consider, according to law. Inapt as rest, guilty by conduct and action or omission of action. Given the legal requirements of a crime. Further, that several of you have occupied the motive, means, opportunity to carry out these acts and intents in the dimensions of space-time law offender and victim. And that the assistant and superintendent have continued not only to allow, but to support these. Are all likely also culpable of such crimes and misdemeanors and inaction. Including the mismanagement of funds, wrongful firing, and the inadequate accumulation of information to carry out. Your elected duty. This is a big leap. Were I in your position, I would do some honorable things. Gracious. Board members, Jeanne Aubrey, Peggy Douglas. Andy Howell, Jason Rayner. Matt Ellis, Deanna Flores. Gracious. We have continued to support Board Member Elisa Roddy for her humane work and talk of attention. We would recommend some resignations. Forthwith. I don't know how we act upon that, but we have lawyers that are available to us who will help decide. We who have spoken are members of the community and caretakers in faith of the educational system in which we reside. Dan Donaldson.
Go off any comments? That was all of the visitors, and anybody else who wants to step up? Okay. So we're going to move on to consent items. And we're going to take the motion to approve the consent, the biased consent items. All in favor of approving consent items as presented?
Aye.
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 All right, so we jump down to action items. I've been advised, first thing on the list is the vouchers.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers as presented.
Are there any questions on the vouchers?
I have some comments. From Mr. Rayner. So Mr. Rayner emailed me Tuesday morning and had a few questions about the vouchers that I'd like to answer. The first one, and again, I'll just give you the last three numbers, because it's nine zero is the. Nine zero five is the first two, three, I mean, Apollo. Four nine five. That amount was nine thousand seven seventy-six in some sense. That was a chiller repair at the middle school. And then there's also a number of travel expenses for various employees. So when the employees travel from building to building, they're allowed to record those miles. And so we are reimbursing the employees for using their own vehicles.
Just travel for work?
Pardon me?
Travel for work.
Yes, for example, if you have a class at the old high school and you're now teaching a class at KRB, then. The technology department travels throughout the district, so. So those are the examples of. Of those. There's also some lunch refunds. Probably five or six different students that receive refunds. Those were for the lunch balance that they had of the graduating seniors. So when they leave, we we cash them out if they have a remaining balance, so. That's probably been a balance for a number of years since we've had free lunches for the past couple of years. And maybe since Rick is here, you want to discuss Project Lead the Way? That was one of. Jason's question. That's a computer science and engineering. Is that a curriculum or?
Um, it's probably, it could be a totally different thing. So we have registration fee. Be as part of Project Lead the Way for both Brian Smith and Essentials of Engineering. And cybersecurity and computer science are case in Blair's new courses. It could also be the equipment that supplies to support those courses, or it could be any OSPI number. Or it could be the actual training that they're currently going through right now.
This was a thirteen thousand dollar expense.
Thirteen thousand dollars. That sounds like the combination of supplies and the yearly fees.
Yeah, I think it was. I was just curious of what that was, so that was my only question.
Yeah, so that's paid out of the CTE career technology education budget.
So it's a, just to give a little bit of a background, it's one of the. What they're doing is they're infusing career and tech ed with more STEM. STEM topics and kind of STEM curriculum, so. Our students will have access, and that's actually a discussion item for later about CTE technology. Have access and exposure to more technology and some deeper level curriculum that is around STEM topics. So, you know, we'll still have the core, the core classes that we've always had, but also we're adding some of those. Science, technology, engineering, math, that type of courses to push our students.
The voucher five nine nine is to Conrad Russell excavation. And that was, we needed his welding experience to fix a broken irrigation riser.
Okay, thank you.
And then we have a contract amount that we pay Weaver exterminating, and that is expenses throughout the district. And. Director Rayner, I have. What we've spent each month, I can either discuss, tell you what it is right now for each month, or I can email it to you or whatever.
Hey, you can email it, that's fine.
Okay, you prefer. There's another one on here that I just wanted to report on. It's a, it's a big number. It's comp unit number five two four. Is a hundred and thirty-three thousand, and Sean, you're responsible for that one. That's your grant.
Oh, yes, that's a very exciting.
Wait.
Ready to talk about it?
No. Just a grant, a grant for the middle school.
Yes, I applied for and received.
I guess you can't talk, Sean.
Oh, good, thanks, Greg. Let me. I applied for and received a grant to put in a visual and a better audio intercom system at HMS. It will be the exact same system that is in all of our buildings now.
So that'll, that'll be reimbursed. It's a hundred and thirty-three thousand instead of. The vouchers. So those were.
Good work, Sean, thank you.
The questions that Mr. Rayner had, Sean, as far as the vouchers.
I had a question on nine zero five five four one to the Graduation Alliance for thirty-two thousand dollars.
So that's for our online student, virtual students. There's also. How would you characterize section fourteen eighteen? That's. Like. Yeah, grad recovery program. So we are now, for this year. I think it's the first year that we've had virtual students. So we claim the money through OSPI. But then we basically pass that money through to Graduation Alliance.
Okay, and then does Red Comet do essentially the same thing as Graduation Alliance?
No. Red Comet is more of a one-off, taking a credit, recovering a credit or two. Sometimes kids recover more. Graduation Alliance is their school.
Okay. How many other online programs do we pay for for credit retrieval?
Just Graduation, Graduation Alliance for credit retrieval is just Red Comet.
Okay.
Technically Graduation Alliance for the graduate recovery program, so kids who have either dropped out or on the verge of dropping out. It technically does that too, but not like Red Comet. It's like still their school.
Okay.
The virtual students, Case, K twelve are paid through Graduation Alliance.
No, K five is ingenuity.
Right, did I say six twelve?
Yeah, you said K twelve.
You said ingenuity, Deanna?
Yeah, six twelve.
Six twelve.
K five is magic learning.
It was called Igeninity, but they.
So there's actually a invoice there for magic learning for seventeen hundred and fifty, those for the K through five students.
The long questions?
I have one more. Well, maybe one. Nine zero five six zero nine to Sylvan Learning. Is that for one student?
Yes.
How about the fifteen thousand dollar payment to Eastern, nine zero five five three two?
Zero five what?
Nine, sorry, nine zero five five three two.
So that's, that's tuition for the students who are taking that Eastern College and High School classes.
Okay. And then. Nine zero five five three eight Fort Scott Community College for twenty-one hundred dollars.
I can speak to that. This is Eric Lariz. So that is for the pass program that we offer to students for credit retrieval. We, Fort Scott Community College is the institution that houses the production of the manuals and workbooks that we use for students.
So that's another online retrieval program we use?
No, no, it is not an online credit retrieval. This is in-person.
Okay.
Ms. Erica Alvarez assists with that. I am the teacher of record, though, for the high school.
So it's an in-person credit retrieval class?
That is correct, and it is not online. It is paper pencil.
Okay.
It's for migrant students who are mobile or transitory.
Okay.
In addition to, it's offered to all students as well.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Okay, thank you. You guys have anything? All right, so all in favor of approving the vouchers, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got a text from Jason saying he had to step away. So that's all of us at the moment. Okay, we'll move on to be second reading of policy sixteen ten, conflict event methodism. Now, this would be second and final, correct, about how we play?
Yeah, that was with the updates that we revised or added with that language. With consideration.
Okay, everybody have a chance to read through? Everybody in agreement on it?
Yes.
All right, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve. Policy sixteen ten, conflict event slash next. Also have that motion.
Yeah, I have a second, a first and a second. All in favor of policy sixteen ten being approved, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, CTE Director, four-year plan. Good morning, buddy.
I know. Good evening. So it used to be called the five-year plan. This is, this is just an annual requirement of the CTE Department and programs. And so the four-year, the district-wide four-year plan comes from the individual department for your plans, and that kind of gives a global, a global view of what we want to do in the future. As well as some highlights for this year, and it's a living document, so sometimes things get moved down, down a little bit, and sometimes things get moved down. Just kind of depends on where we're at. But first, I'd like to give you a few highlights for this year, so we continue. Continue to get excitement and supplies for the new facility, and to be quite honest, the supply chain, what was interesting. There, we're still getting some things that we ordered in September. We just about have. We were able to articulate three more dual credit courses with CDC, which is Terminology, CAD, and with only two with CDC, and then with, well, we were able to articulate fundamentals. And so, so those are three more dual credit courses, which brings our CTE dual credits courses up to eleven for total of forty-seven credits. And I'll get a report sometime next, next year, as far as how many credits were actually from our students this year. One thing we noticed towards the beginning of the squeers are, are CTSOs like FFA, HOSA, FBLA, SCCLA. They weren't, they weren't seeing the interest that they normally had, and kind of felt it was a result of COVID and students not knowing what's available in classes or in schools. So we talked about having a fair where we could advertise and promote our clubs for kids. And so we worked out and we, I reached out to Normal, and we expanded it to include all activities and all, all clubs within, within the school to give the kids a better knowledge of what's out there, and we've already had, had a discussion as far as continuing to do that next year. And then finally, this year, another highlight was we started offering our first coding class with Dean Smith at Housel. So then as far as where we're going in the future, and Matt kind of spoke to this a little bit earlier. Another curriculum and instruction, we continually look at and review what courses we're offering, what courses could we offer, and what courses we will want to offer later on in the future. And from that, and it was a state requirement for us to start offering computer science and, and, and courses in that area. And we hired Case and Blair to teach cybersecurity, computer science, and robotics next year. And currently, right now, he's getting his computer science training through Project Lead the Way. Later in the year, he'll get his training for cybersecurity. And then next year, we're going to look at adding AP Computer Science as we build out that program. Brian Smith, our CAD teacher, is expanding within his program with Project Lead the Way, Essentials of Engineering. And he's currently getting that training right now. But Project Lead the Way is they provide the curriculum and provide the training, and it's just kind of a backbone. And it's really beneficial for the teachers, and it's a, it's a great program. It's a lot better. Like when I started teaching, you know, they. It's a lot better. Like when I started teaching, you know, they handed you the, the book and say, go forth and teach. So it gives you training in the curriculum and I, and I really, I can really support that. And then Riley Maddox is, we're going to add, add Business Foundation next year, and she just finished up the training through the case curriculum. Also, that, maybe next year, I'm still working with Dr. Rafati out at the Research Center, but we're working on developing a work site learning program out there that, that all of our C T E programs can do. So because they have, because they have the business office, so students from the business program can go out there and do what's happening. Obviously, they have all sorts of ag, they have robotics, and they have facilities management. So we could hit, we could hit all the different departments. And what, what the, what the idea is for that is it's going to be kind of modeled out of help outs. Where the students would go out with, say, let's say I was in ag and I want, I wanted to do the rotations there. I could, I could work for so many weeks with different researchers and get more exposure to it. Or if I want, if I wanted to specialize, maybe get in, in one special area, I can, I can set up and my work site learning just with that one researcher. So that's, so that's a, that's something we're working on and planning to offer in the future. Also, some other things we're looking at for offering in the future, we'd like to look at the possibility of offering construction trades, expanding McKenzie's program into sports medicine. We're also looking at some biotechnology within the ag program and keep looking at the possibility of some sort of broadcasting type of courses. And so that, those are, those are kind of our long-range plans. And then as far as our facilities, we're going to continue to review what we need and replace equipment as needed. And of course, make sure we have all, all the equipment and supplies offered, offered in courses. So for example, let's take Case and we've ordered the new tables. We're getting his classroom setup. His computers are here. The robots just came in. And then as well as the other project with the way supplies that he needs. Leadership, the teachers will continue to increase their petition, participation in the C T S Os, which is part of the career and technical student organizations. Kind of looking forward with, with our vex robotics, it's also aligned with TSA. Student Association and doing robotics competition this year. Dual credit, we're going to continue to, to look at some other dual credit or college in a classroom opportunities. I'll speak a little bit more to that later, later on when we, we got to talk about some other things. And then professional development, once again, continually to get, have teachers go, go to their specific conferences so they can learn from the peers and, and learn some other information. And anytime we have any new curriculum, making sure that teachers are trained in that curriculum so that, so the students get the most benefit. So that's kind of, that's kind of the synopsis of the big plan and questions.
Sounds wonderful.
I, we have a great, I have a great staff.
Like the, the egg business, well, I like a lot of the different aspects. The broadcasting, our communications, we used to have a local radio station in town. It used to do, they broadcast the games and things like that. I know you're talking more about streaming and things like that, or it could take different, you know, different, have different faces to it. But yeah, and so this will drive staffing as well as resource allocation of the most department. But yeah, I, I, I'm speaking for myself. I'm pleased with some of the moves we're making in the direction. It's highly beneficial for our kids.
I really like the lot of different things that kids can consider going into.
Yes.
As an occupation, because not everybody wants to go to college.
Well, and then that is the, the role of C T E. We prepare kids to go to work, prepare kids to go to technical school, prepare kids to make the job.
Wonderful. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So what do we need to do when we do a purpose, right?
Yes.
So I make a motion to approve the C T E district-wide four-year plan?
I'll second.
Here we have a first and a second. All in favor of approving the C T E district-wide four-year plan, please say aye.
Aye.
The Legends Casino Grant, Eric Lariz.
So I was approached by the security officer at K R V and asked in regards to some assistance in applying for a Legends Grant. So I helped Mr. McCullough complete this grant for the boosters that are needed at K R V, which strand and the heights elementaries to assist in the functionality of the radios that were purchased and used by security and staff. Currently, the situation that we have at K R V is that we have a relay issue in regards to the radios. And so it was, there was a conversation held with, I believe, Mel from our radio servicer, who suggested that we put a booster on top of the building to assist with that. And so we wrote the grant to Legends Casino for some financial assistance in accomplishing that goal. The original grant ask was for a little over eighteen thousand dollars. They did provide us a sum of six thousand dollars towards that. So we could purchase those boosters to be affixed atop of the elementary to ensure that our radios are in a continual working state, no matter what. So, and where you're located on the campus. That's what that grant is for. And we're just asking the board to please accept that grant on the behalf of the Prosser School District so we can move forward and get that going.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lariz. Entertain a motion to accept the grant?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor of accepting the Legends Casino Grant Award, please say aye.
Aye.
And thanks to Pat and Paul for going after that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, fellows. Okay, temporary out of endorsement waiver.
So Tammy caught one more teacher, Mr. Harris, when the middle school's staffing was reduced, was moved from being a math teacher to a science teacher. He took his science test last summer, but he didn't get the endorsement on his certificate in time for school to start. So he shows up as an endorsement teacher. So we have to have this approved by the board and we just uplift the minutes. The states are the one.
Hey, everybody in favor of the temporary out of endorsements or?
Temporary out of endorsement waiver as presented.
Sorry, I did myself.
Second.
What did I miss? Oh, yeah, well, I'm still writing on the, I thought I missed the whole, which isn't above me. All in favor of approving the endorsement waiver? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, that's what, that's what I thought I missed. Lisa, are you still with us?
I am. I said aye.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Okay.
Thanks, thank you.
Didn't hear it. I apologize. Except donation from Music Matters.
I'll make a motion to accept donations from Music Matters as presented.
So Mr. Norris is with us.
I'll second.
This is a two thousand dollar grant?
Six.
Six. Oh, 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 I missed the bottom part. I just saw the top part.
I think he talked about it when he was here, getting some print horns and.
Yeah.
He went down and saw grads, oh, supplement the adoption process.
Kudos to Mr. Norris. He's done a great job. So motion to accept the donation for Music Matters?
So moved.
All right, all in favor of accepting the donation for Music Matters, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, last on the action items list is the approval of the new business manager contract. Can we entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the revised version of the contract for Amy Hill as business manager. I'll second.
All in favor of approval of the, the new business manager contract, please say aye.
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 Okay, we'll move on to discussion of budget as a.
All right, thank you. So I just want to maybe just start out by saying I'd like to have a formal study session next Wednesday. We might as well have a meeting every Wednesday this month.
Absolutely.
I'm not sure. It didn't show on the future meetings, but I thought there was some agenda items on that.
It should be at work.
I'd like to have a rather substantial budget meeting. Right now, we're really close of having a draft of, of the budget for next year. And when I'm saying that, as you probably know, I've said this multiple times. The district actually has five different budgets, five different funds. The one that we're all mostly concerned about is the general fund. And I thought maybe tonight I just give like some accounting overviews of how the budget is generated, what drives it. Maybe just for your information and, and answer probably some more specific questions next time. Showing, I do a lot of worksheets. The district or the state has their own accounting program, which, which we're required to use. But I do a lot of spreadsheets and I'll have a lot of information that we can discuss more, more closely, more in-depth next time. But I do have some slides that I developed this afternoon. Maybe Sean, if you can put the first, just, just in generalities. Enrollment, student enrollment generates staffing units. And I thought if you're not familiar with this, this is, this is what the state actually funds. So as you know, there, there's multiple programs in the school district based on the accounting manual from the state. And these programs just have numbers. And the basic education is by far the, the large, probably the largest program in the school district. It's not only comprised of like classroom teachers and counselors and certificated staff, but it's also, and we'll see a little bit later on the next slide. It's also comprised of support services. But I, I wanted you to know that the state actually funds those various class sizes. You can see K through, you know, three is seventeen, four is twenty-seven, five and six is twenty-seven, and then you can see the seven, eight, nine through twelve.
Well, I did tell you it's smaller.
Well, that's okay. We can just scroll down too. But so those are the actual class sizes. And then the state for nine twelve has also given an enhancement for lab science. So you, you take the enrollment and at the high school and you multiply times these factors and that generates so many teachers. It's interesting that the state pays for four days of substitute teachers, which is ridiculous. At a hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-six cents a day. So the balance of that has to come from somewhere. The state is not funding. That's all, let me say it that way. That's the only money the state funds for teachers. And then there is a factor in all these formulas for planning time. I don't know where they came up with these percentages, but that's what we deal with. Fifteen and a half percent for K six and twenty percent for seven twelve. So that's, that's just the, the basic education, classroom teachers' side of the budget equation.
So, so just to add on, it came up last meeting and it came up a little bit this meeting. So when we're talking about funding formulas, class size, per typical model, all of that stuff is lumped in on this. And so as Craig had talked about, these are, they're, they're not actuals or averages. And so if you have a class with, say, like three kids, right, and you have one thirty students, you know, getting, getting to an average that the state would find at twenty-eight point seven grades nine through twelve. And so that's why we were, you know, that's why we were looking at that and I then had identified that. And this also encompasses, as Craig had said, many certificate staff and allocations from principals and vice principals and other positions that actually make the building work.
So Matt, that's a good segue to slide number two.
A team, team player.
We didn't even, we didn't even discuss this.
They didn't even rehearse it.
So this is the other staff levels. And as Matt said, the notice that where it says base enrollment of four hundred through gates, creates K through six. That's the state is saying is a prototypical elementary school. Who knows if that's true or not, but, but that's how they're funding. So principal, if we had four hundred students in an elementary school, they would, now, let me, let me just say the current funding column is the twenty-one, twenty-two number. The supplemental budget that was passed in March is for the twenty-two, twenty-three. If there's an asterisk in the next column, that just means it's the same. I mean, it hasn't changed. So one point two five three principles of enrollment for four hundred grades K through six. So certainly if it's less than, you know, if it's three hundred, then of course that factor would be reduced by, by a hundred, a hundred full-time equivalent students. And you can see, I think this is interesting that.
Just pause that.
Yep.
So the, the state used to also calculate allocations based upon staff mix and the state salary schedule. And so all that went away with McCleary. And so all that was locally bargaining. And so even though they funded a certain level, we, we receive funding at a certain level. Locally, locally bargaining agreements are outside, sometimes are larger than what we receive from the state. And so that's a question in and around sustainability when we start looking at budgeting as well.
The next one I want to point in is that guidance counselor in where it says the note, staffing units highlighted subject to step in compliance. The state has funded more counseling services. We are a high poverty school district. So it was point nine, point four three, four nine three. It has gone up to point nine nine three. So we have increased some additional counseling dollars. Again, these are allocations from the state. And my plan next time is to show you what the state is actually funding as far as staff units and dollars. And then compare that to what the district actually has as far as staff units and dollars. So I think that, that is really the, the crux of the budget is, you know, where are we overstaffed? And by how much dollars? I mean, I'm just dollars. So then you'll notice that they also have increased school nurses. Again, this is for four hundred students, point oh seven six was this year. They have increased that to point two four six. Again, for, if we had four hundred students, we would be allowed, you know, a core of a nurse, which is ridiculous. But anyway, that, that's the model that the state is, is funding, social workers and psychologists. And then all those other ones, Sean, if you can move that up just a hair, the teaching assistants. So now we're getting into like classified personnel. Those ones above were all certificated, but now we have teaching assistants, office support, custodians, student and staff safety, parent involvement. So those, those are the classified. And then for the middle school, grade seven through. So those, those are the classified. And then for the middle school, grade seven through eight, the prototypical model is four hundred and thirty two. Full-time equivalent students. And there again, it's the same. Concept of how many principals and teacher librarians and guidance counselors, again, at the high poverty level. So for four thirty two, we would get one point seven, one, six guidance counselors for the twenty two, twenty three. School year. Again, the ratios are a little different, but. And then the last piece down at the bottom is the high school, they're saying a prototypical high school for nine, twelve is six hundred. Full-time equivalent students, one point eight, eight. Principals, et cetera. So are there any questions anybody has on that? Like I say, I'll show more, discuss more detail. Next Wednesday with where we actually are. And where we're estimating that the budget will be. So then I thought you might be interested in. The district support. Is the, the next, the next slide, Sean. So this is. So program oh, one is the basic education program, just for the number, district-wide support. Is numbered as, as number ninety, program ninety seven. And again, it's the same concept, a thousand full-time equivalent students generates. Point six, two, eight. Technology people, Sean, you're aware of that. So if we have two thousand, you know, it's going to be one point two, one point three. So the woefully underfunding technology, facilities, maintenance, ground, same, same concept, mechanics. Now there again is, is the, the teachers. But then there's also, the, the state is aware that there's also central administration, you know, district. District office administration and their formula is five point three percent. You know, the percentage of units generated of the teachers. Again, I love these formulas and stuff, but if you're interested in that, I can show you my worksheets, but. Five point three percent. So that would typically. For administrative staff would be Matt Indiana, because they're funded out of program ninety seven. With those ratios there, there's also classified, like the district office staff in Indiana's. Workers and staff in her department are, are, are split that way. Twenty five point four percent of the five point three, if that makes sense, seventy four point five, three percent of the. And then the district also receives basically supplies. The acronym there is M SOC. Maintenance supplies and operating costs. And. We used to call it NERX in the old day, non-employee related, but it's all, you know, non-employee type stuff. So. There's allocations for technology. There is, and this is based on FTE students. So technology, a hundred and seventy three dollars per student is what we receive for technology. Utilities, insurance, and you can see all those other things. They, the state doesn't say you have to spend that money specifically for those categories. Of course, we, we try to do that as much as we can, but we're short in, in many of those things. But that's, that's just the, another allocation that the state gives to us. There's a higher allocation for. The CTE program. But that's, that's the money there.
So as Craig had said, a lot of times the M SOC is the money that, that gets bargained. And so the state will come out and say, oh, we just put, you know, like millions of dollars in the student technology. But it's also the money that's up for grabs in a lot of cases. So.
So then I thought I'd just give you a flavor of the next slide. Is, again, this is the state's, the state's form. It's called the F two, oh, three, but it's the state of Washington's side of. Money that, so the apportionment, let me just talk about that real quickly. The apportionment, it just means that. The state is going to pay us a certain amount each month. They're going to portion what our basic education. Enrollment is generated based on all these formulas. And there's, you know, if you looked at the financial reports, the state funds a different percentage. Most of the months, it equals, you know, a hundred percent at the end of the year, but some months are lower, some months are higher. So. Again, this is just a draft. This is, that's why I put draft on there. Don't quote me that those are going to be the actual numbers. What's interesting is on that account thirty one, twenty one, special education, general apportionment. There's a percentage that the state is saying of the basic ed that these special ed students. Are general ed or basic ed students also. So there's a percentage. Of the apportionment money that actually goes to help fund the special ed program. And then you can see right below that, the forty one, twenty one, again, these are all state-funded. Special ed is a totally different funding model. So these ratios and the staff mix or the staff percentages out the window with all these other programs. So those, you know, the seventeen to one, K through three. Those are not applicable to the, the funding models for the other state monies. Which we, for lack of a better term, call categorical funding. We have basic ed and then categorical. These are some categorical programs that are funded by the state of Washington. The learning assistance program. There's two pieces to that. There's, there's that program and then included or embedded in that is a high poverty. Program that's in that one point nine million. Transitional bilingual is. Mister Larez is the director on that program. We have a highly capable program. And then in our transportation, we have. An operational side of transportation. And we also have another fund. That's the transportation vehicle fund that pays for school buses. And that reimbursement there, I estimated two hundred and twenty six thousand. That's the basically depreciation that the state of Washington will give us to help purchase new buses. And then. The vocational programs are one in which the state said, you have to spend a minimum amount of money. So we collect the money, we, for middle school, we have to spend two hundred and six thousand. For nine through twelve CTE, we need to spend a million, nine, fifteen. Now, Mister Follett, I believe. Has. Good, healthy budget. The other thing I should say is that these monies can only be spent in those categories. So. We can't take, now there, of course, there's. Some allocations, for example, there's, you know, some insurance and stuff that, that we can logistically. And realistically and legally charged the vocational program because a lot of their students. You know, are, are covered with insurance. So there are some things that we can, we can split fun, but as far as like vocational spending. You know, making a big transfer to the general fund, can't do that. The transportation can't do that. Bilingual can't do that. So those monies can only be spent in those programs. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about, maybe just go down a little bit more. Matt had talked about allocations. So for instructional staff, that's going to be teachers, counselors, nurses, et cetera. That are, they're called. Certified instructional staff, you know, they're not instructing per se. Students. That allocation is seventy two thousand, seven, twenty eight for each. Full-time or for each staff unit. Now, when I estimate the enrollment, I'm still finalizing that. The district generated a hundred and fourteen point oh, two, five certified instructional staff. And you multiply that seventy two thousand times that, and that's the amount of money that the state is being allocated. Now, the district probably has more than that. As far as maybe FTEs and average. So the seventy two thousand is what the state pays us, but if we have seventy eight thousand or, you know, eighty thousand, then of course. The state is not funding that. On the, on the flip side, if our average was sixty thousand, then the district would generate additional money on that. The state doesn't force us to have a hundred and fourteen. Uh, we can choose to have less. Which we don't, but, um, we can have more, but that's either going to be levy or reserve or fund balance, whatever you want to call it. For as far as administrators, the next box there. The state funds us for eight point four administrators and their allocation to the district is a hundred and seven, nine, fifty five. And I'll just tell you right now that our average administrator does make more than a hundred and seven thousand, nine, fifty five. So again, same, same concept. We receive nine hundred and eleven thousand dollars. That's the total that the state receives, sends us for allocation. And then the last allocation is the classified staff. State funds thirty five point eight, two, four at fifty two thousand, one, seventy three. If, again, our, our average is more than that, then the district needs to come up with money. That's all that the state is going to fund. Now, when the state. Passes through, we used to call it COLA. But now the state has this fancy word called implicit price deflator. The alloc, the, so basically a raise, a cost of living that the state legislature adopts. Then that increase is only based on these allocations. So. There again. The amount that of increase is actually bargainable with our union partners. But those are the only amount allocations that the state. Will give us in those three categories. Again, this is all just basic ed, basic education and district-wide support. So that's basically all I'm gonna talk about tonight, but next week. I'll have. Spreadsheets and I'll have an actual.
How long are you figuring?
Hour, hour and a half. Yep, so you're.
With that said, uh, the reason it's not on, actually, I don't know why it's not on there, but we have a meeting where we're gonna. Talk to the parents, choice out, or choice in.
Okay.
And have that discussion. On the twenty nine.
Is that going to take a long time?
Well, there's probably more. I think, I thought it was a twenty, you set up.
Was it?
I thought it was twenty nine.
Twenty eight is a Tuesday, twenty ninth is.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, and so there's probably, there's likely more that may be added. That may not be a standalone topic at that meeting. There may be a lot of, that we need to discuss.
Do this and that.
Yeah, Selena and I are actually working on an agenda that we could have out to you tomorrow. For that special board.
I, I just want to make sure that I haven't adequate enough time to.
Hour and a half.
Yeah, we'll see how it goes. I mean, if there's a lot of questions.
I have no questions, Craig, um, based on those slides and then also, um, the record bulletin article last week about the budget. So we end this year, this budget with just under a two million dollar net profit. Is that correct? That was the information in the record bulletin, one million, nine hundred and twenty seven thousand.
For the, for last school year?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then when we talk about unassigned monies, is that separate from the surplus or is that the same?
So basically the how we have, I think, don't quote me, but I think we have five point four million. At the end of last square. And the items, the items that are. Reserved or designated are going to be like the state carryover monies. So CTE is going to have, so let me just explain it this way. For the state programs, that allocation, the state's going to pay us all that amount of money over the twelve months. Regardless of how much we actually spend. Now, there is a limit of carryover, for example, lab. Is, is ten percent. So let's say that, you know, that we get one point nine million. And we spend, you know, a million nine, and we spend one point eight. Then that hundred thousand dollars only can be spent in the lab program. But it's going to be reserved in the fund balance. So basically it's money we've got. But it's assigned or designated only to be spent. So the five point four now is going to be reduced by that hundred thousand. Same thing with the CTE. They have a carryover. That'll also be reduced from the five point four. Trying to think if there's any others that I have.
Well, so my question was, is the unassigned money, and you talked about this in the record bulletin article, the four point nine, five, eight million. Is that the same as surplus or is that separate from plus?
Nope, that's, you, you can call it a lot of different things, surplus.
Unassigned surplus. Okay, so.
Savings, cash reserves, it's all kind of the same.
Okay, so just under five, five million.
Right.
And that's about ten percent of the budget?
No, our budget for this. Is like. Forty two million was our.
Okay.
The budget for twenty one, twenty two.
Okay. And then have we allocated the one, or are we count, accounting for the one million dollars in the one time? In enrollment stabilization, stabilization funds from the state, is that allocated in these two budgets?
So, so that money has, was received in the month of May.
Okay.
Last month. And so that would. Help our fund balance decrease our deficit for the twenty one, twenty two school year. Now.
Is that part of the one point nine two, seven million then?
Nope.
Okay, separate.
That year is done.
Okay.
That year's finished. We started with, I guess it's actually right here on the. On the budget status report. Actually, yeah, five point four. Five million, four hundred and thirty thousand is the beginning fund balance. There's four hundred and fifty one thousand that was held for carryover. And there's also twenty thousand, the food service does an inventory at the end of the year, and that's twenty thousand dollars. So. We do have. Starting the year was the five point four and then the un-designated would, would have been the difference between those two.
And then in real estate holdings, and it's, and this is a conservative number. We have a, the district owns about one million dollars in real estate.
It's probably.
Based of twenty seventeen appraisal, so that's.
As a, as a ballpark, yes.
So we haven't had discussions about taking money from the surplus to balance the budget. And then selling the, a lot of this real estate we own. We have that property on OIE bought in the nineties to build a high school. We built the high school, not on OIE. Um, there's someone in town that's very interested in buying the white church. I'm understood that they've contacted the district office. We certainly aren't maintaining it. It doesn't look great on the outside. Me, maybe we need to have discussions about selling some assets. And taking money from the surplus and shoring up this budget. If we do that, can we afford to keep the AD director? Can we hire? A fourth and fifth grade teacher that we built these new classrooms for? Can we, um, hire a secretary? I mean, I will follow up on Suzy Strauss. I worked, sit on many scholarships committees. And Linda did, Ledesma makes those scholarships happen. I mean, I just don't understand how we could function. Without a count, a full-time counseling secretary. I mean, what, what is our end goal here? Do we want to, you know, have as many services as we can for students? I mean, what, what is our end goal here? Do we wanna, you know, have as many services as we can for students? Or do we want to operate skeleton crew? I mean, what, what's our goal? And then I go back to, you know, what we discussed in May that we haven't discussed since was that our pre-COVID statistic was that three-quarters of third graders aren't reading at third grade level. So for going to huge class sizes, cutting down their support, cutting down classes, not having higher math in middle school and high school, I mean, what, what's our goal here? Just to process kids with the bare minimum? I mean, we have the money and the assets to make this happen. Why aren't we talking about making it happen?
The, the issue with liquidating the properties is that it has to go into capital projects and so
Well, let's do that.
Yeah, so like we could use it to say if we're gonna address the stadium, but it, it can't go into salaries. And so it's a separate pot. Um, initially, we had, uh, when I first came in, and this is on the heels of MacLeary. Um, our local effort assistance um have been cut in half. And so we had looked at all sorts of cost savings, and that was actually a question that we have. Um, and so i- if you were to sell it, it can go into building buildings, but it can't go into
Okay.
thing for the people who are inside the building.
So, I mean, so now that we've built all these new buildings, what, what are we gonna do with this property when we sell it?
Yeah.
I mean, did we?
So we've talked, we've talked about that before. The thing with property is, is that, you know, it's, it's probably wise to hold on to a couple pieces.
Oh, for sure. Not all of it, but we own a lot.
Yeah, knowing that crosser may grow, um, or the, there's projected growth. And so what we probably know to be true logically is that when we go to buy property, it'll probably be more expensive than the property that we have already acquired. And so if we're looking at buying, say, seventy acres, uh, fifty acres, and that's about the size of a school campus. Uh, a property of that size is gonna cost the district a large amount of money, and so unless we wanna sell and then plan on the back end um of purchasing another parcel uh someplace, um, and working with maybe a farm, some farmers outside of town. Um, I mean, there's, there's all sorts of conversations in and around that, but
But right now, Matt, we're, we're not filling the classrooms we've just built. I mean, we're not, we didn't fill a fourth and fifth grade position last year, is that right? And now we're not doing it again this year? So, I mean, we're talking about way future growth, which would be wonderful, but we're not filling these classrooms, and let's go, so let's go back to the budget. Why can't we take money out of the surplus, shore this up so we can provide services to students? And then move some real estate?
Yeah, so
Why aren't we, I mean, my, so my, why aren't we having those discussions as opposed to cut, and Craig, can we afford that?
Well, let me just make a comment. So, the school year stands by itself. So, September through August is the fiscal year of the school district. And that budget, basically, for twenty-two, twenty-three stands on its own also. Now, I've been under the presumption, not gonna say assumption, I've been under the presumption board wants twenty-two, twenty-three to be balanced, meaning that all the revenue equals the expenses. Now, if the board is going, and we can have this conversation, but I'm, I'm doing the budget preparation based on that zero sum for twenty-two, twenty-three. If the board, again, board discussion, board comment, wants to spend some of that four-point-eight million dollars of reserves, we can certainly do that, but, but that's
Yeah, and I, I would also add that, so we want, what we want to do is work collaboratively with the board as we work through this budgeting process, and so Craig had talked about he's close to having a draft. We're not even at the point yet where we're ready to present a draft to the board. Um, and that's like a zero draft. It's not even a first draft, and so um, well, after we produce that document, I, you know, obviously it's the board's decision how they want to allocate resources. Um, we were to the point once upon a time, and this is pre-COVID, that um we were sweating bullets about, you know, having conversations about RIF or how the fund balance would, would trickle down because we, the model that we were running was sustainable for a period of time, but not over the long run. And in the conversations around that time, we're really around betting on staff, um, staff attrition. Uh, that a lot of people within our staff, veteran teachers, would be retiring. Um, and we'd have the opportunity maybe not tire back, and so there, I mean, this is, this is spanned, at least I know my career, I don't know if, if it was talked about with Ray. But it's been, you know, I'm going into year five, so at least four years, um, that, uh, it's kind of, we've kind of been trying to work through this.
And
My, my point is, we, we haven't discussed this enough in this budget conversation. We haven't discussed borrowing from surplus and selling some assets. We've just talked about, okay, balancing the budget, and this is what's going to happen. Everybody wants us to have money. Everybody wants to save money. We don't want to go into debt. We can't have another, you know, million-plus deficit like there has been for a few years, but we also need to provide services to kids.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely a balancing act of how much is too much reserve, how much is not enough. Uh, the, one of the main reasons, I think I've talked about this, but I'm not worried about repeating, but the main reason for the one-point-nine million dollar surplus was because we didn't have school. So we didn't have any substitute costs, which is, as you see, we only get, you know, you know, forty thousand dollars, whatever, in subs from the state. Uh, we didn't have class or um building utilities were way less. You know, the state funded um all the meals, so we had a lot more, way a lot more breakfast than we could charge and we never count that we never had in the past for lunches, so all those things contributed to that. I mean, I was shocked that, that, uh, we had that amount of money, and also we had, I don't know what the acronym stands for, but the ESAR funds from the federal government that we could justify saying that all these expenses that we normally had in the budget um for building budgets and maintenance and those kind of things, we could actually use those and, and charge to the ESAR fund. Um, because it's for distancing and, and all those kind of things, the masks, you know, the the personal equipment and those, all those things that we bought, um, otherwise would have been out of district budget, but we used the federal money to offset that, so that was
Well, yeah, and on the back end of that, we're dealing with inflation um because of some of those, you know, large governmental moves during the time of uh emergency.
I would like to make a comment. We did have a lot of financial meetings, and it was unanimous vote by the board to get the budget in balance. Because if we don't do it, we're gonna be looking at the same thing a year or two from now, and we don't know what's coming in the future. Nobody was ready for COVID.
You know? Yeah, that was kind of a, I guess, a, a response that there, you know, there were a lot of people during that COVID period at time. They were asking why, you know, number one, why we weren't prepared, why we just didn't go out and buy stuff in advance, uh, receiving some of the stimulus funding um from the government, and so um hindsight's always twenty-twenty. Uh, a, you know, um, I think that, like Craig said, uh, we're working on a draft budget. It'll be passed by the board, um, based upon that document when we present it. Um, we'd love to work with the board. If it, if it is that the board wants more staffing, we can talk about what that looks like and even make recommendations for where that staffing would go. Um, but, you know, what we've been tasked with or asked to do was present a, a balanced budget where um, we wouldn't tap into cash reserves.
Yeah, in fact, uh, I would like to point out that we've had numerous meetings, and unless I was totally off-base and misunderstanding everything that was said, every budget meeting we've had for months now has been absolutely, we want to be a balanced budget. If, if we as a board decide to now pivot and change direction, then I suppose we could have some meetings in the next couple of weeks, but we darn well better get our ass in here because we got what, by July?
Well
We've had a, we've had a lot of meetings that talked about the levy. Absolutely, like what would happen if the levy failed. We had those discussions. But we haven't voted on the budget for next year, and we talked about ways, you know, to make it work, but we haven't talked about taking money from the surplus or selling real estate or to make sure that students are getting services. And we've talked about tonight, I mean, how many different online, you know, programs are we paying for, up to the hundreds of thousands of dollars? Um, and we're not kidding, any of those where they're being duplicated.
So let me just speak real quickly. So the calendar for the budget, we need to have at least um a preliminary budget that's available to the public by July ninth. Now, that doesn't even have to be close to what the actual budget is. I mean, I'd like it to be, right? Because it's a lot of work to get it up to that point. But that's, that's the technical.
At least it might.
It's frozen. It's, it, yeah, it's not, it's not just us.
Okay, I was like, what, what's going on?
I, I think everyone on Zoom can hear us. But yeah, it's Craig's frozen mid, mid thought.
Well, Jason, did you have any comments? I know you're back on.
Uh, consider, about the budget, is that where we're at? I'm sorry, I had to leave for a minute and come back, so I'm not sure where we're at.
Okay, well, um, at this point, it sounds like we're kind of changing directions, or at least we're gonna, as a board
Talk about it.
Have some new discussions. So let's put that, I guess, to bed for the evening, uh. The next on the discussion item would be the CTE.
Yeah, actually, since Mackenzie's here, I'll let her talk about it. It's a, it's her piece of equipment.
So while she's walking up, again, remember, you need to spend a certain amount of money, that minimum amount, or the state takes a different way, so I think this is it's a part of our conversation about the CT has money to purchase this piece of equipment.
Yes, so uh, my health scientist program started two years ago, uh, and it's grown significantly, and students have very much uh grown in this program and been much more prepared for health occupations, courses that we offer. Um, and this last year, we were able to dual-credit medical terminology um through CVC, which was awesome. And now, um, looking at the more advanced class called anatomy and physiology. Uh, we're hoping to purchase a piece of equipment called the anatomish table, which is a very cool device. It's a, it's a very large computer that is um going to have four different cadavers or actual scans of cadavers inside of it as a um computer system that you can tap on, and you can go from the skin to the muscle, all the way through all of the systems of the body. And you can flip it up and actually make it so that it can face the entire classroom, and I can um teach on a cadaver in front of the room. Uh, really cool features is I can um take like a brain of a person that had a traumatic brain injury or who had a gunshot wound to the head, and I can display that for the kids to see as well as multiple other pathologies as well. Um, and so this purchase would make it so that my anatomy class, we can start to actually explore making it dual-credit as well. Um, which would be huge uh for students who are hoping to go into the medical field because they would uh be able to then get that done, and hopefully that would make it that much easier for them to get their bachelors, their doctorate, or whatever it is in the medical field.
I'm all for it. I want to come see it.
Well, and I know you guys got the brochures, but both Mackenzie and I sat through, through um demonstrations of it. And it's three-D, and the, the brochure doesn't even do it justice.
It's amazing.
It is just a really amazing piece of equipment that, that she can use in all her classes, as well as her future classes. And it comes with, like she said, four different cadavers. The, the, I can't remember what the sentence was on, on each one, so you get each, get very, very fine pictures. And each of those cadavers come with pathology, and then I believe there's over four hundred other pathologies that she can demonstrate, as well as um some, uh, images around pregnancy, as well as some animal injuries. And it's just a tremendous piece of equipment that I think will benefit our students, and if we can get that, if we can get that anatomy physiology dual credit, that's two classes that, that the students from Prosser High School have, if they're going into the medical profession, it's required. You don't, you don't get past either of those courses if you're in any aspect of the medical profession, and we'd be able to get that out of the way for them.
No actual dead body in the
Yeah, it's all that you'd ever Yeah, I showed it, I showed it to my daughter. She was actually, um, she was at, at Central, she was actually the, the A and P cadaver cutter. No, no better way to say it, but that's, but she, but that's what she did. She just would take it layer by layer as the instructors wanted it from the different courses.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And then, but I also want to uh commend Mackenzie on, on her medical terminology. When we first proposed it to, to CVC, they're like, oh, everyone else does it in at least a semester. You guys are only doing it in a trimester. We're not sure if that's gonna fly. And since we use the same curriculum at CVC, and they looked at Mackenzie's final, they approved it for trimester, even though everyone else has to teach it, but it says semester.
Cool. Sounds great, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I guess I'll prove the appeal of it.
All right. All right, well, it looks like you're up again, Craig.
All right, just real quickly, I know that um I want to report to the board any other donations that are less than the two. Just, just so that you're aware. Again, Mr. Norris is back at it. Um, he did receive two more Legend Casino uh community grants, fourteen-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars for the high school to purchase two Piccolos and eighteen-hundred-and-eleven dollars and forty-five cents to buy Euphonium. So that's uh Mr. Norris. Uh, Prosser Heights. Stephanie Fiander received fourteen hundred dollars for hands-on activities and materials. Mr. Harris, you see Nathan Harris received fifteen hundred dollars for STEM Lego educational kits. And Principal Jody Saban received a thousand dollars for positive behavior incentives. And at Keen River View, Jesse Ramble received fifteen hundred dollars for play therapy tools. So Legends is giving us money and I contribute to their funding. Not gambling, but they're real quickly, for May, financials, uh, as I had mentioned in the apportionment percentage, May is you know, one of the lowest, we only receive five percent of the apportionment uh for May. June is six percent, and then in July, twelve and a half, and August ten, so we'll, we'll get a pretty healthy bump in July and August. But the one thing that Director Riley pointed out was that for the month of May, it's kind of interesting that legislature adopted um their budget for twenty-two, twenty-three, but yet they gave school districts some dollars for enrollment stabilization in this current school year, not for next year, but for this year. So the district received nine hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars for enrollment stabilization because our enrollment has continued to drop. They compared, I can't remember which, which year, uh, compared that year to, I think, last year. And so we received nine hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars for that. And then, the other thing is that whenever the district passes a levy, the the other thing is that whenever the district passes a levy, the state has a matching contribution formula. And the state also gave the district a hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars for that, both of those amounts in the month of May. Now, that's going to help contribute to lessen our proposed deficit of one point six. Um, I'm still, I'll have a number for you. Next time we meet, June payroll will be done and I'll try and estimate what our estimated ending fund balance is through August, which of course then becomes the beginning fund balance or cash reserves at September one for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. The other thing is uh that I like to compare month to month, the certificated wages were about twenty-five thousand dollars higher compared to April. Mostly because the teachers are now turning in more of their enrichment hours and we had more substitute costs than the previous month. And then in the, the M Sox, um about eighty thousand dollars higher. Sean, again, received an emergency connectivity grant and we paid for some Chromebooks and laptops uh during the month of May, so that is why the, the M Sox were about eighty thousand dollars higher uh compared to April. The other funds, you know, capital projects is our building, construction fund. That's, that's ongoing. We're close to finishing up, a knock on wood, Heights and River View. And then what will be remaining would be Witstrand um for next school year. ASP is basically students spending dollars and collecting uh funds, debt services to make payments on the debt or bond and some non-voted um debt. And then the vehicle fund transportation is to purchase vehicles. We do have a purchase order of a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars that we're going to pay. Hopefully it gets here, but uh if it gets here, we'll pay it in August to um compensate or to make, to match the depreciation that we'll receive at the end of August. So that's kind of a quick, quick on the financials. June, as far as student enrollment is the last month of counting and again, talking about the virtual students. As far as what I've done for this year is I've subtracted out the virtual students because, as I've said earlier, that's basically a pass-through. We claim the students and then we'll pay Graduation Alliance and some of the other vendors uh with those students that we've claimed. And so this has subtracted those students out. We averaged um just about twenty-eight virtual students for the year, for the twenty-one, twenty-two year. But with those taken out, um we ended up with four full-time equivalent students above what the budget was. That's probably the closest I've ever been in my career. Kind of, I mean, enrollment is not a it's not a um an easy thing to come up with. Particularly next year is going to be a challenge, but do my best and try and, and estimate the enrollment. So we've ended up four above um for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Not including the, the virtual students. So that's all I have.
I wanted to follow up on the grant that um was given to the social worker at um KRB from Legends.
Okay.
Okay, and she's, she's left that. She's not coming back for next year. Are we filling that position?
The, the KRB counselor?
The postings is.
Yes, we are.
Posted, okay.
It's not posted yet, but the Selena sent it to me today to check it, so it'll probably be posted tomorrow.
So we, we plan to fill that position. We hope to.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. That was my question.
Any other questions for Craig?
Thank you, Craig.
Sure, welcome.
I just have one thing I want to talk about. There was a item that was on the agenda for our K five ELA adoption that was pulled off the agenda today. And I, I just wanted to let the board know, we had about twenty-five people on that committee, teachers, bilingual, regular ed, principals, administrators, coaches, plus parents, two of which those parents are certified teachers. That committee spent about seven hundred hours of time just in regular meetings, not counting the time that they worked in their buildings. Was pulled out today. And yeah, Alyssa herself highlighted, you know, we have struggling readers. We have to have a curriculum where we can establish expectations for teaching and learning. We have three K elementary schools all doing different things and some of them without curriculum. Some have made up curriculum. They're doing the best that they can with what they have. But we have to move forward so we can implement in the fall and pulling it off the agenda potentially could delay that decision as much as the weeks because that's in next regular board meetings. And that's jeopardizing our ability to be prepared for school to start next year. The materials have been available in the district for a while, um public availability for the last couple of weeks. And I would ask that there's board members that are, that are, have one that pulled off the agenda because they want to review them if that could be expedited. And that could be added to next week's agenda. Um, because we also are dealing with supply chain issues, arranging training. Um, it's a big purchase. I have a couple, there's a couple of the principals here that were part of that process and they're very committed to doing this work and um we're just concerned that this is jeopardizing the work that we've done.
Fair enough.
I, I would opportunity with anybody that's hesitant about the curriculum and go through.
Or has questions.
Well, it was, it was brought up a few weeks ago that multiple members wanted to be able to physically see it before we approved it.
Yeah, so.
And I think that's what. I didn't realize it was already available anywhere I had heard it was, so.
Yeah, and then with all the other conversations that have come as a result of COVID, everything from critical race theory to gender. Um, the, I, I think uh people wanted to put their hands on the actual curriculum and kind of go through it and take a look at it uh before it was approved. And so it was, it was just a knowledge component. I think for, for uh different board members so that they could answer to the community about what's in it when they get questions.
I, I'm happy to answer questions to the community too. If you, you know, email me or contact my office. Kevin as well, his building did some piloting this year, so he has even more into the knowledge of it. Um, and I think that has stuck in the back of his car. He can take.
I do, I do. So I have boxes of books.
Followed you to your.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so.
Uh, I will say, I do have one other thing. I'm gone with several teachers and principals to Abbott next week. And we don't come home until Wednesday night. But I, I can be online, whatever. If, if this is a, I, I, I'll make sure it's my birthday.
No, it was.
Well, that day, not today.
Pretty happy. So no, I will, I will make sure and Alyssa and Lisa and Jason also contacted them because all five members wanted to be able to lay hands on it prior to approving it. So had I known it was there, I would have.
And I think probably the, the uh, for the sake of time, the smartest strategy would be to divide and conquer. And so to divvy it up and then uh each board member can review their portion and um.
There's some different variables out there. They're
I want the pictures. Do you have, you have more? Sorry.
No, that's it.
Okay. Uh, board member reports. Alyssa?
I do, and I'm just gonna you know, reiterate what I had said. I'm sorry, am I interrupting someone?
No, absolutely not. I'm going to need to keep going, sorry.
Um, I'm going to reiterate what I had said during Craig's budget presentation, like you know, what, what, what's our goal here? What's our purpose? What are we trying to do? Are we trying to provide the best services to our students? Are we trying to be good community members? Are we trying to be a good partner with the community? Are we trying to work with our stakeholders? Are we just trying to have a skeleton crew and push kids through? Um, I think we need to reconsider decisions that have been made. I think we need to fill positions. I think we need to not have twenty-eight, thirty kids in elementary classrooms. I think we need a fully staffed high school counseling office. That includes a full-time secretary. We need a full-time athletic director. I was reading an article yesterday in the Sunnyside paper in Zilla announcing their full-time athletic director position being hired. We're to be the only school, two-way school without a full-time AD is a mistake. We don't have a plan. We don't have a plan for next week. If you fail to plan, you plan to fail. And I learned that from my um freshman uh physical science teacher, Mr. Lusk. I had him, and maybe it's different. Um, those of us that have spoke out in the community and that have had him and experienced, you know, him in the community and seeing at chamber dinners and being actively, you know, a visible person in this community, we we need to rethink this. This is a misstep and we need to adjust ourselves.
Thank you, Lisa. Jason?
I got nothing at this time, thanks.
Thank you. Jean?
Um, I just wanted to say it was a privilege to be able to hand out diplomas at graduation. A really fun part of being on the board and Jason did a wonderful job for us.
Speaking?
Graduation was great. Uh, Jason did a great job. The high school principal did a very nice job of pulling it all together and especially it was a difficult time for him and his family and um so that a lot of work ahead of us, so.
I think I'm good for the night. Can't say nothing nice. Don't say nothing at all. Isn't that what they say?
There you go.
All right. So I did, I did, I did. That's where I hold myself. I mean, the last, what would you like to say?
Um, I have a couple of things for the Brian's. Um, Brian Bailey, tremendous job on graduation. Uh, it was just executed while um was just like two minutes over an hour, which is tough to do. Um, but it, it really had a sense of decorum and uh just did a tremendous job. So uh, that's the first one. Brian Aberg is the second Brian. Um, he had the gen- generator fixed at HMS and so that's up and running.
So.
So, yeah, we can uh honor our commitment to the city as a kind of an emergency preparedness site. Uh, the other piece on that was during the meeting, actually. Um, he, he sent me a text about Witstrand. Witstrand will be moved as of uh the end of this week, he thinks. And so the Help You Move company is a very focused team and we're going to start on, on that as well. And then I want to say beyond graduation, uh, there's a lot of us had the opportunity to attend the key leaders luncheon for Thrive. Yeah, yeah, unfortunately Haley Green's going to be moving on with her family, um but they've been a tremendous partner. Craig, uh Craig Deanna and I, this even encompasses some of our other directors, Cindy Dean being one. Um, we're still looking at parapositions. Um, that can be reduced. Sometimes it, what has happened in the past is that one-on-ones get hired um is para pros. And so, you know, uh para pro to, to a student. And then the student will end up leaving and we continue to have the para pro um staff within the district. And so looking kind of at the numbers and um, and obviously the IEPs that really drive that. And um seeing if there can be reductions made there as well. And so we're, we're still reviewing any staffing cuts will uh passed by the board first. And then lastly, Patterson, um I talked about it, the proposal that they had had sent us um with the amount of money um for this building or their contribution for it. And so I told them, I believe it was the twenty-seventh, um they're having a board meeting that I would show up, so um, I need to have a response whether we're going to accept uh their proposal or not accept the proposal. I had contingencies within it. Um, like we weren't going to try and consolidate. Um, their students wouldn't have to pay a participation fee for athletics uh at the middle level. And then uh, I think that was, I think that was it, but uh just working with them on trying to resolve that. They're going to have a new superintendent coming in July one. And so I think they want to get that off of uh their plate and not kick the can down the road. And they, you know, I would like this, I would like the same thing. Um, so, yeah, those, that is all I have to report. So are there any questions on any of those informational items? Yeah, or they, they're going to zoom it. Um, Peggy and I had been up there one time before and it was right as we were kicking off construction. And so what we did was because we have even though we haven't had a tremendous relationship, their district and our district are connected. And so I think it would behoove us to uh really try and work at fostering that connection after we get this resolved, uh, you know, to and to really build that um because they do feed into here. And um, you know, that was one of my questions for the board when I applied about what does the board want for the communities, not only a Prosser, but for Witstrand and Patterson as well. Um, so.
Okay, so future meetings. We just got done discussing being quadruple booked, so the twenty-ninth. Craig, you think an hour and a half will do it? Yeah, I could make it work. So why don't we say we start at six, we do Craig first. And then at seven thirty, we'll, we'll start the, uh, I guess we're calling a listening meeting or whatever. Jason, Alyssa, are you guys okay with that?
That's, that's fine. If Deanna wants the, the ELA curriculum on though, um for approval, it has to be a special meeting and not just a study session.
Yeah, it'll be posted as a special meeting because it's not a reoccurring one. Um, and so we'll get, I talked about Selena and I working on a draft agenda. We'll get that out tomorrow. Um, hopefully tomorrow early or late morning and then hopefully we can get it posted by Thursday, Thursday afternoon uh for that date. But we'll, uh, we'll send it out so you have eyes on it before.
Great, thank you.
Jason?
Yeah, that worked.
Okay, so we're just planning on uh we'll get the budget stuff and the SCL out of the way first. And then at seven thirty, we'll start and we'll just go to.
I do have staff who said that we're at the meeting. All right, I can, I, a lot of my, of us will be coming back from Seattle, so we'll probably be online.
Will you be coming back from Seattle?
I'll make sure we all take some texts and hold and.
And even like we're, we're in C, at training next week, but if you like email us or text us, we can find a time to call you and answer questions or whatever.
Also, that will tomorrow.
Yeah.
Jason, Alyssa, are you guys cool with that as well?
Yes.
Yes.
We'll make sure you know where, how to pick up, send textbooks and read through. And just everybody grab a couple and we'll go from there. Anything else, people?
Yeah, there's certainly summary information that would be helpful for us to read.
That we have on the, on the, for, on the very top page of the website, there's so there, but I think the easiest thing to look at is like, look at one's and a teacher's manual. We have, just have like a sample of structured phonics work, so. I can, I could send them the links to those.
All right, back to future meetings, uh, regular meetings, July thirteenth. Right here, study section on the twentieth. Again, right here, that was the seven and then July twenty-seventh. I'm back here for the next and final regular meeting of the month. We have yeah, I still think that we had early July too, but I don't remember why. No, there, I don't have. Uh, we might not talk about a budget for you. Set that up.
Yeah.